Accounting back office process update. Jonathan Cooper on potential panel municipal planning grant application. Who's like Hydro Net Metering Agreement Extension. Animal Control Officer Leonard Cody. Town Hall update. Fall cleanup at the cemeteries. Policy review. For $665, public comment adjourned. Can I entertain a motion?
I would.
I add something really quick.
Yeah.
It'll take literally 10 seconds. I just have a cool announcement. So if you just want to do it, you know, after the minutes or the warrants or whatever.
Okay.
About a grant.
Do you want to do it after warrants with correspondence before?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we'll make you for a Rebecca.
Thank you.
I'd like to move the animal control officer after correspondence.
Up to five A.
Yeah.
And then the policy review is going to be 11A. That's being added as well. Okay. So with that, can I entertain a motion?
I'll move approve the agenda with the changes.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Approval of minutes of September 23rd, 2021 special.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those approved say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes of September 23rd, regular meeting.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those approve? Aye. Opposed? Warrants. Accounts payable from 9/28 to 10/4 for $10,959.21. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed. Accounts payable. From 10/4 to 10/5 for $399,573.37. I just want to say that is the Town Hall Foundation and the modular balance of the new town hall, just so everybody's up on that.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, accounts payable. From 10/8 for $372,899.62. Can I entertain a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Payroll 10/1, 2021 for $10,367.28.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Payroll 10/8/21, Mike, you're in this one for $10,102.62. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you. Payroll for 10/5/21 for $9,644. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? Okay, I'd like to open this up for public comment to see if anybody has a question. Megan, is there anybody out there?
There's no one out there? No.
Thank you. Moving on then.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt?
Yes, you may.
Just to, did we announce that the 399,000 was mostly the town hall?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to.
It said Town Hall Foundation and the modular balance.
Okay.
And remember, everybody can go on our webpage and look up the warrants and look at everything, okay? It's a reminder for people out there that want to look. All right, Rebecca?
Question.
Yes, so I have a really positive announcement to make. There is a grant called the Borac Grant. And Jennifer and I were meeting with Kat over at VLCT, sorry, BCRC. About applying for it and the first round is you have to write a letter of intent to apply for the grant and then you're you're given permission to apply for it. So I, I, I think I have the numbers right. There were 107 applicants and 34 of them were chosen to apply for the actual grant and panel, panel's application was chosen. And this is a grant that we are seeking, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars for place making, creating a permanent way into the Scribe Bridge Recreation Land. And parking.
Excellent.
That's awesome.
That's it.
Thank you very.
Thank you very much Rebecca. Okay, we're going to go to correspondence. I got a correspondence from Joyce Health. It says, Angie, I just wanted to say how impressed I was with Leonard Cody. We had a stray cat hanging around for months and of course I fell in love with it. While leaving food for it outside, I posted and asked around, but nobody contacted me or claimed the ownership. I decided before winter turned bad that I would part with him, but I wanted to make sure that he would find a good home. So I contacted Leonard and he was fantastic. He brought a carrier, spent time with the cat, was extremely caring. And he made us feel very confident that we made the right choice for reaching out to him. Thank you Joyce Health.
She make you some muffins?
No, sir.
And then we received another letter to the select board from Barbara. And her husband about the problem on Route 7. And she asked us to answer it personally, which we will work on.
Barbara who?
Blair.
Blair, excuse me.
Okay.
Sorry. She wanted to know which trailers actually people lived in. Do they have to be inspected or proved by the septic system? I just want to tell her that they are on the septic system, the town septic system. She's worried about the trash and the groundwater and the health hazard. Yes, we do have a health officer. She wants to know if we pass junk ordinance. We do have an ordinance, but I don't remember it right off the top of my head. We can look that up and send it to her. And yes, we do have a health officer. Mr. Miller. So we will answer this more specifically and send this back to you, okay? Thank you very much.
Probably more important than the ordinances, we have the bylaws.
We have the bylaws, correct. Yep. Okay, so moving up to 5A, which is Animal Control Officer Leonard Cody. This is our animal officer, in case anybody doesn't know, this is Leonard Cody. He's doing an excellent job. Okay, sir, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. So I've only got six things to bring up. The first one is about the town, the town dog houses and the kennels that were provided to me by the town. Has anybody here actually seen them?
No.
No.
Okay, they are in very rugged shape. One of them is completely falling apart. Is rotting. There are insulation boards that are showing. I actually took pictures. These are the actual dog houses that we have and the fencing. The bottom picture is the inside of this box. One of the dog houses is actually really nice. The other one is lacking. There's no roofing on it. It's just some heavy plastic canvas on the one that's falling apart. The fencing around the actual good one, the pole is bent that actually holds the door shut. I have to use a ratchet strap to keep dogs in. There is a hole in the bottom of one of the fences. This is the pink insulation board that's all the way throughout the entire dog house. There's nothing from stopping a dog tearing it up and getting into it. Neither one of them. Yeah. Either one of them are insulated. Both the doors going in them are too short and broken. So. They need to be upgraded in a bad way. So we can either spend money on fixing up something that's falling apart. Also, the kennels aren't really that safe for me, especially the nicer doghouse. There's literally an 18 by 12 inch doorway to get inside there for me to clean. And as you can tell, I'm a little yeah, rotund. So it's hard for me to get in there and to clean it, sanitize it out every time I got a dog. I literally have to squeeze my upper body in and that's all I can get in there. It's not safe if I have an aggressive dog that goes into that one. If I had to try to get it out, I have no other way except trying to crawl through a little hole to get to it. The fencing situation, every time I open a door, if a dog doesn't want to be in there, it bolts and I gotta play Dog Officer Part Two. Catching a dog that took off because I have no way of blocking off as a secondary.
Right. Is there room where we could reconfigure?
That's at my house.
These are your house, right?
These are his house.
Just so everybody's clear, these are, these are your residents.
Yes.
The one that's fallen down, it'd probably be better just to rebuild a new one and if we could reconfigure it.
It's so nice that you said that.
I think he's got, I think he's got.
That's what he's here for.
He's got a plan.
He's got a plan.
I'm so glad you brought that up, sir.
These are the ones that we picked up from.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And. At all.
They're.
Well, I think they were used though.
They were used when he bought them.
Yeah.
And I think they were used.
I'm also, I'm not comfortable putting somebody's dog in here in the wintertime when it's not insulated. When we get chilly weather.
Yep.
All the time, like the last three dogs I've had were all little ankle biters. These dogs, these houses aren't meant for little dogs, so even if I insulate everything to the T, they're still going to get cold and freeze to death. The problem with dogs staying there is because of my work schedule, I can't get them to second chance until Saturday. My work schedule keeps me, second chance closes at four o'clock. I never know when I'm getting out of work. It's usually anywhere between 3:30, 5 o'clock, somewhere in that area. So with that being said.
You don't, you don't leave work to take care of the dogs?
Well, he's out of, he's like in Saratoga.
Well, if you want a rough idea of where I went today, I went from Bennington to Queensberry to Rhinebeck and back.
No, I'm just kidding.
About 388 miles. So these there are two companies that provide these kennels. Pass them along. They're completely insulated. They have options of all kinds of options where you can have them already pre-wired for electrical. They're already prefabricated. So all they do is load them on a truck and bring them there. They, you can set them up for plumbing, which I would prefer because I get some very ripe animals in at my house and the only outdoor plumbing I have is a cold garden hose. It's not ideal to wash down a dog that doesn't want to be washed down. They're sending me a price list. They haven't sent the price list yet because it's one of those sign up for our website and we'll email it to you eventually. Now, the problem with these kennels is the size. They would have to be on town property. Somewhere on town property, not on my property, because who's to say the town elect or elects to actually get these and five years, something happens, I don't want to be the animal control officer or.
I was just going to ask you how easy it is to move.
Oh, that's why it's going to have to be a permanent structure somewhere. So it'd have to be on town property.
Rolling trailer or something to move something like cats.
Right.
Depending on the size of it, because there's two different sizes there. And like I said, I would, I would like heating and cooling source in there because in summertime. You can run a mini split in either one of those. And I already priced it out of Granite City and at my cost, it's going to be $900. That'll completely keep the temperature where it's supposed to be according to the weather to keep the animals in healthy condition. With the bigger one, we could actually close up one of the banks and get cage banks for my next thing I would like to talk about is the TNR program. TNR stands for trap neuter release. The Greenmount Mobile Home Park have a very bad overpopulation of feral cats. It is ridiculous how many cats there are. There are kittens running around at random. You can't go five feet in either one of those parks without seeing a stray cat. So I talked to Second Chance the last time I was up there bringing up a dog. And I talked to their vet about the snip program and they are willing to cut the town a very good price if we were interested in soaking up the cost, they would do fix or neuter any cat for $10. A whack. Any kittens I capture, they would keep and they would adopt out. So.
So a few, 200 cats, they would spade all of them for $10 each?
Yes. And what they do is after the cat's been spayed or neutered, they put a notch in the right ear. So if we happen to go through and trap it again, I already know that one's fixed. Skedaddle.
Yep.
Get out of here. So that's another big program I'm looking into. The problem with that is I don't have anywhere to keep cats. Until I can get them up to second chance. That's why the kennels come in to play again.
Grants out there for some of the stuff.
That's why I'm here. Cause I, I have no idea how to do this. I'm still brand new to this.
Nope. We're all learning all the time.
Anybody have any questions for me yet?
Not yet. Keep going.
Okay. Trespassing poultry. I know I brought this up to you a couple of years before, but now I'm here at a meeting. It's something that needs to be discussed. There is a resident whose property line is split by a fence about yea high. They have free ranging chickens and free ranging turkeys. Their birds keep going over into their neighbor's property and the neighbor's dog grabbed a chicken. And didn't kill it, maimed it pretty good. Sent the bird back over and the lady went over and apologized to him and asked if he could keep his animals on his own line, said they're free ranging animals. They can go wherever they want.
Well, unless the dog can have a free meal.
So. She, she is upset about it because she doesn't want her dog grabbing chickens, which I understand. You don't want a dog getting used to doing that because then he'll always do it.
Right.
So I approached the person who owns these birds and he said he is not doing any, he's not fencing his birds in because they're free ranging birds and we have no town by law or any kind of law at all about free ranging animals staying on your own property. So that's something that needs to be addressed.
Definitely.
Okay, the next one is the 2022 dog census. I don't think it's ever been done in this town. We, by state law, there's supposed to be a dog census done every year to know how exactly how many dogs are in this town. I brought this up when I first started animal control and I was told that we would mail out flyers for it or mailers. So people could fill them out and tell me exactly how many dogs they have. But those things are going to be thrown out. People aren't going to answer them correctly.
They don't want to license them all.
But love that, there's that. Julie, so since I've taken over, dog licenses have gone up significantly. They're going to go up a lot more when I start enforcing off next year, which is another issue we got to talk about. But um. How would you like me to approach this dog census? I can literally take a weekend and go knock on doors and ask people about their dogs, but this is a Vermont state law that it's supposed to be done every year.
Yeah, doesn't the licensing give you the census?
No, it doesn't tell you exactly how many dogs are not licensed.
Uh, well, that's true.
That's the, that's the whole point of having the census. I know Julie's already ordered, I think she told me 600 or 700 more tags for this year. And I plan on filling them all out because I have a feeling that there's that many dogs in panel. But that's, I have to find it out, all that information. So I can go door to door. I got no problem with that. It's just, it's going to be on town's dollar with my pay and mileage.
Right. Yeah, that's probably not the best way.
Well, so, so could we, could we do a census? Through a mailer to start with? And then after that mailer, you know, 200 people send in the mailer, then you don't have, then you could check those off your door to door list.
So you want me to do both?
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to be cost effective. I mean, I understand and I want you to do, do the job and do it right. And that's what you're doing. Okay, I get that. I totally understand it. Well, and I'm trying, I'm thinking as we're talking. If, if we sent out a mailer, you know, to all of us and you got in 200, like I said, 200 returns. You could go through and check those 200 residences off your door to door list.
Yeah. Okay.
Or something like that. I mean, you know, is that sound reasonable?
That's absolutely fine, man. I'm just trying to figure out what's going to be more cost effective for the town.
Right.
So I have a quick thing in my head that just popped in. How many people vote in March? Could we just put a little, not on the ballot, but a little thing with the ballot. That way it's anonymous and maybe they would fill it out properly. And say, how many dogs do you have?
But we're only doing absentee to people who request it. Or are you saying as they come through the door?
As they come through the door, put it with all. Yeah, just a little slip.
So the census doesn't actually record two dogs at this residence, one dog at this residence. It just counts the number.
Counts the dogs. Like, do you want to know if there's 600 dogs or 800 dogs, correct?
Yeah, just so we know exactly how many licenses we're going to need.
Right.
Because the year before I took over, I believe there was 97 dogs licensed in this town. Yeah, we have a lot more than that. I have more than that just in my neighborhood.
Yes, Ellen?
Yeah, some of the problem with last year's licensing had a lot to do with COVID.
COVID, right.
Because if you go to the year before that, I think we had more, but you are right. It has declined tremendously. Tremendously. I think, I think the sending out things for you, Leonard, at first would be a great idea.
Yeah.
And then put some out, I would put them out at the thing. I don't think you can really legally hand them out with a.
Oh, just put them like on a table or something?
On a table by when they come in the door. Whoever's there can say, and there's also the census we have to do for dog census.
Yep.
That's required by the state. Could you grab one of those and maybe fill it out and get it back to the town?
Right. Yep.
So, so would our plan of attack? Me. Our first, our first plan of attack is to hand them out like you're suggesting Ellen at, at the, you know, March election. And then, and then send out a mailer. So if I filled mine out at the March election, I wouldn't obviously refill out.
Right.
One that came through the mailer. But if we kind of did it in steps like that where we go, okay, we send out the one or we do the one at the voting. Then we do a mailer and then we have to do our, is there a time limit?
It doesn't give a time limit.
So we could do it in those three stages like that then.
I would put, I would actually make some posters or something. Put it at Winchester's, put it at Village Market. Put it at the post office where a lot of our town people go.
Right.
Wherever business stewards, wherever they'll have a poster board that you hang them up and say the town of panel is doing a dog census this year.
For the state of Vermont.
For the state of Vermont. Here's your, you know.
Right.
We somehow make a pocket and leave the things. They can grab them there too.
Right.
Is it a form that they have to fill out?
No.
So it's, it's really literally a question of how many dogs do you have in the house?
Yes.
And we can draft up something like that.
They don't have to give me an address.
Because the, I mean, if we get the count and then we know what that is, we, we know what we have left. But we don't really have the addresses that we have left, right? But then rather than door to door, can we get a couple of people on the phone?
That there's 500 dogs, then pretty much you know people were honest because you know there's a lot of dogs.
Right, exactly. Yep.
Do they have to leave their name?
I would say no.
I don't think so. But it's just.
If we didn't have the name though, that would defeat our purpose of doing everything.
Then you don't know who you, who you hit.
Because if I fill out my census and I don't put my name on it and you come knocking on my door, we've wasted your time because I already filled mine out.
Yeah, right. Okay.
We could do something on the web if that.
And they are too. That's a good idea.
Right, yeah.
Are you holding a lot of dogs?
I've held a lot of dogs. I've found a lot of dogs. I've taken away dogs from people. I don't know if you heard about the hoarding case?
Yeah, he took care of all that. I was supposed to email everybody and I didn't do it. I'm so sorry, but he did take care of all that with Fred Miller.
I'm just curious because I mean, first of all, there's, there's a, there's a limit how long you've got to keep them.
Yep, five days.
Right. And I mean, you're looking at dog houses and you're looking more like, like we're going to run a kennel.
Well, I've had several situations.
Kennels my, all my life, so.
What you said, you don't have any right now, right?
I have the dog houses. I don't have any dogs right now.
No, no, what I mean is you don't, it doesn't have any dog, doesn't have any dogs right now.
No.
But they're, they do come in, they flow through.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But he has to store them until the weekend because that's when.
That's when I get them to second chance or deal with, I can deal with people, like say I find a lost dog, I post it on Facebook. I'm getting really good with that. Usually within three, four hours, I found the owner. But there are the occasional ones. Like the one that was abandoned down by the railroad tracks. It was tied to a tree. On a 30 foot line where he could have run out and got hit by a train, but a citizen found him. I had to hang on to him for four days and when it was getting a little chilly and we had that bad rainstorm, I had to bring him into my garage. And he got a little destructive in there, but I dealt with it.
In my opinion, Leonard, I think we need to get you the appropriate equipment to perform your job.
Right.
Okay. Now, I don't know what that, the answer is right now. But to me. I think, I think finding a place on town property to put in something like this may be a little bit difficult at first.
Yeah.
At first.
Yep.
Not saying long term, but I'm saying at first. But I would think that we could come up with some sort of a to try to make it easier for you to where we have something that's at your house, if you were so inclined to have it there. Similar to this situation here where you have a building that the dogs are in that building, you don't have to go in. You can go into the inside of that building and get the dogs from in there.
Yep.
And you have the outside cage where you don't have to worry about them bolting on you. You know, similar thing, you know, I don't, I don't see why we couldn't do something like that fairly short term.
Is that something that could be done before winter hits?
I would, I would like to see it done before winter hits.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, you know, whether we, whether we take it, okay, we give you a, we give you a two animal because you, you're doing more than just dogs, but we give you a two animal place.
Yep.
At your house to take care of dogs. That's, that's insulated and whatever. We may not be able to put the running water in or whatever, but we give you something that's you know, I'm, look, let's face it. I don't want you crawling in a 12 by 18 hole and getting bit by some aggressive dog.
Yeah.
And, and you know, I mean, the dog might not be aggressive other than you're a total stranger and.
Could be scared. I've dealt with them.
Yeah, no, that's right.
Every time I get a dog I don't know, I will literally sit in that kennel with it for a half hour. It's used to me. I haven't tried to do anything like that.
And I'm sure so. I would, I would be certainly in favor of doing something like that before cold weather hits.
Like a portable shed maybe would add two kennels onto them.
Yeah.
I'm all for it. That'd be great.
It would actually put the fence on the outside of the shed.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to make his job a little easier and a little more effective for him. I mean. We, we actually have an animal control officer. See, I didn't say dog officer.
Attaboy.
We have an animal control officer who's actually doing his job, whether it's, whether it's for dogs, cats, goats, chickens, whatever. And, and if we're going to have an animal control officer, I don't want to tie your hands at your house taking care of the animals. I have a problem with that. I have a problem tying your hands. So. I'm all in favor of doing something.
Well, that answers my budget question then. Because the other day I stopped here to ask Tim about my budget and it's chopped down to almost nothing already.
Yeah.
I know Tim explained to me that it goes off of last year's numbers and I, that I know that animal control really wasn't a top priority because.
And I think it needs to be. I think it needs to be pushed up the ladder. So I don't know what, what the answer is, but I would, I would love to see maybe and I know we're getting kind of in the weather situation here, but if you could come back to us with an idea of what's going to work and how much it's going to cost us.
Okay.
You know. You pick up a dog, somebody calls you and they got a dog problem, you go pick up a dog. It has no tags or anything. So what you demand that they get a tag before they take it back? If they're going to take it back in five days?
Yep. They have to, they have to first prove ownership. Cause I've had, I actually had a Boston Terrier where three different people tried to claim it. They have to prove ownership of the dog. The dog has to have a current rabies vaccination. And ask that if it's not licensed, they have to bring me the current rabies vaccination and then they go to, they have to license it at town hall before I release the dog to them.
Cause we got to have an organization where we're going to discourage this mad dogs running all around the town.
I'm working on it.
I'm, I'm not the bleeding heart liberal that people think I am.
How many calls you've taken care of since you've been?
No.
I told you to do that.
I know. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Facebook posters.
Tim has, Tim has all my hours, all my sheets.
I mean, he's doing an outstanding job.
Can't we build like a without permit? You can do something like a 10 by 10?
I think the new bylaws, the new bylaws.
300.
Well, 300, 300 square feet.
Right.
So. And then you put, you make the, so that he has doors that he can.
I mean, if somebody, if you can find somebody to build something like this, that'd be even better.
So maybe, well. Along those lines, along those lines, and I hate to give you something to do because you have plenty. If we could reach out to Career Development Center.
Yeah.
At the high school. And maybe they, we could give them a project where you could come up with some sort of a design. I don't, I don't. All, all the time up there. Well, yeah, but if we give them sort of a design and we give them something to do right away. You know, and say, hey, we need this before November 15th or whatever, whatever, you know, for all day.
They charge.
Yeah. It's got to be less expensive than going to the shed man and buying a shed.
Absolutely.
So, you know, if we could reach out to the, to the CDC and, and maybe you could, like I said, maybe you come up with some sort of a, a design. The rest of the fencing is just a matter of.
I could use what I have.
Some chain link fence and we could, you know, if you need some new gates and whatever, whatever we have there, then let, then let's just get some gates. That's my opinion.
Joel, maybe he has something over there at the garage.
I doubt if there's any chain link fencing, but we can check for sure. It doesn't hurt to check.
Road down at the racetrack.
Yeah, so we may have some, but.
Well, that's a good idea using school.
I just, I think if we could reach out to the CDC, you know, we may be able to get something done.
Quicker.
Okay.
And sooner, yeah, absolutely.
And we'll say, you know, like I said, design it your way.
Sort of a design yourself or you have to.
Downsize.
Move the stuff in the middle or whatever and a candle on each end or something.
Yeah, well.
So you could take care of it.
If we could get you something like that for two of them, is there one of the, um, ones that you have now that we could fix and upgrade to help you get through?
If we can. This one. It's a nicer one of the two with actual shingles on it.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to just cut another access door in there and I'm not even gonna pretend, try to be the tough guy, say that I'm a world's greatest carpenter. No. Definitely not. I, I would rather flat out admit to you, I don't know how to do something than try it, mess it up and it ended up being more expensive.
So do you need a door here or do you need a door in the fence?
I need a door in the actual dog house itself so I can access the dog and actually get in there and clean it properly.
Okay.
Cause I can't fit in there. And then if we're gonna keep using this, this one needs a new pet door because it's already, if they're, or both doors are two inches short on both dog houses. So air just blows right in. Insects get in there all the time. I have to spray bugs out all the time.
Be better to take and put that on the outside of the fence and cut a hole in the fence. And, and made it that way?
I'm open for opinions.
Well, I'm just asking, I mean, if that's a better shape and if you have the room for it. Um, cause we could just build out a short outlink into that fence.
Well, I think, I, I think we could, we could find somebody that's gonna be able to cut a door, an access door in there without a lot of trouble that he can get there and clean that down the road. I still think the answer is to get him to.
Right.
Uh, a building.
Yes.
Has at least two.
Yes.
Accesses.
Uh, two places to, do, do you need three? Have you ever had more than two dogs?
Yes.
So, so if you had a twelve by twelve or.
I could hang on to this one and then plus whatever new one you guys provided me for temporarily until we talk about.
Yeah.
He is.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Okay.
For a different look.
Then, then what I'd like you to do for us is, is come up with a design.
Okay.
Fairly quickly. And, um, we can get that to the CDC and, and see if they can do, we probably should contact them first, see if they could actually do it.
You've got some measurements on them things.
Yep.
And then, um, you know, if you come up with whatever is gonna work best for you.
Wouldn't be too tough for them to.
No.
Take them, the measurements and.
Right.
And that's actually, that'll hold three dogs the way that one's set up.
Right.
And that'll take up less room than both these dog houses because both these dog houses are over ten feet long.
Okay.
That's similar. Well, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be like.
Yep.
That, but I mean, that would be absolutely perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, and.
We'll see what we can do.
That's got a man door you can walk into. There's.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. If you had, had a door where you walk in and you, you can take, you know, and take care of those.
The one that he's pointing to.
Take those three dogs.
Yeah.
In, in that building and you can take care of those. You can access the dogs from there when you need to get them out and whatever. You don't have to worry about them getting out of that.
That's the other information.
It's gonna make life so much easier.
Then let's.
Let's do that.
Let's move forward and bring it to our next meeting.
Can you bring it to our next?
Indoor.
Yeah.
Of the cost. All right. Was there anything else on your list, sir?
Did you wanna, I thought we were sending that to the CDC, see if they could build that?
Yep.
Yeah.
We still want you to get.
To him for. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Um. My last thing is violation prices. I talked about this before. Um, according to town policy and state law, all it says in there when it comes to issuing tickets for violations is that I'm allowed to write up tickets to five hundred dollars.
It doesn't give you any leeway?
No, it doesn't tell me so much for this violation, so much for that violation, nothing. It all says I'm allowed to write up tickets five hundred dollars. So.
So it's at your discretion, basically.
It is, but I don't think it's.
I don't think it was.
I don't wanna call it a power trip.
Intended to be at your discretion. I think it was intended that you had authority up to five hundred dollars to write them. And it has to follow some kind of schedule. I, and that's what you're asking.
Uh, yeah.
That's what's.
I'm asking.
Do you use state issued tickets?
I use the municipality ticket.
There's nothing on the back of them for prices?
No.
So there's nothing like.
There's nothing in the handbook on it either.
No. So the violations I mostly deal with are running at large.
I'm sorry.
Previously, few years back, a few of those kind of tickets were written, but they were only written for ten dollars. Like a first offense, ten dollar, twenty dollar, something. I would have to look back. It's been a long time.
Okay.
We've ever, that was way back.
Okay.
Um.
I'm sure it was.
That was way back. But there's gotta be a way to set.
Yeah, but you gotta be able to set.
So I talked to Angie about this and she asked me to look into what other towns do.
Yep.
Other towns aren't real generous with their information, but I did find Montpelier and Burlington. Um, Montpelier does a first time violation of any ordinance is forty dollars. Second violation of an ordinance is eighty, third, and violations of this ordinance is one twenty. Uh, Burlington is a little more expensive. They start at a hundred dollars, one fifty and two fifty. But it also doesn't break it down according to.
What type of?
What type of violation, like dogs running at large, not licensed. Um, bites that don't break skin. I had to deal with that one. Bites that do break skin, bites that kill livestock. So I wouldn't, I'm looking for some kind of breakdown and price tags for tickets.
I think we should find out more from local areas that don't have that big population. They got a lot of money in Burlington and Montpelier. We ain't got a lot of money down here.
Nope.
And take care of your dog.
That's right, you can. But that's still a while. You don't need to be, be blessed with the fine. Since your dog happens to be run loose.
Nope. I, what I do for any viol, anytime I'm dealing with anybody's dog running loose is I catch it, I find out who the owner is. I give them a verbal warning right off the bat. Second time is a written warning and then third time it goes to a ticket. I haven't wrote many tickets for dogs running at large. Usually, once it gets to the point of written warning, it stops. They either put fences up, they put them on tie lines, they have invisible, invisible fences put in. So I've dealt with a lot of people when it comes to that and.
I understand you probably have and I, and I also, but, uh, I, I, I still believe that I think you're doing it right with, uh, you know, give them a warning, but I'd ticket them the second time if it was me. I say, look, I already warned you once. Now you're gonna pay a ticket.
What good is a ten dollar ticket?
Well, I'd go to a lot of people that don't have a big job.
I'm just saying, what good is a ten dollar ticket, Ronnie? If you get a ticket, somebody.
It should be a hundred dollars?
No, I'm not saying that either. I was thinking like twenty-five bucks. But I'm, but a ten dollar ticket, i- if you're gonna give a ten dollar ticket, you might as well just give them a warning because they're just gonna pay the ten bucks and they're gonna move on.
That's why I, I was leaning, kinda leaning on Montpelier, but they did the forty, eighty, one twenty.
And I was thinking a twenty-five dollar ticket, like, you know.
But it also depends on what the violation was.
Right. And I think if you have a, a animal that's killing livestock.
Yeah.
That should be more expensive.
Yeah.
That should be the cost of the livestock.
Well, that's the, that, I thought the state took care of that.
And I think some of that's a civil issue.
Exactly.
Watch your lines, like with the, uh, I was gonna say something outside the meeting, but like with the chickens crossing the fence line.
Yeah.
Well, but that's, that's, that's different though.
But we don't have anything right now.
Right.
So right now it's still civil.
Yeah, right.
And, and that might be where some of it belongs is with civil. If you're talking about destruction between, between, uh, uh, citizens. Uh, but for the fines, I mean, I, I think I'm, I like the idea personally. Well, let's go, let's get into it.
Getting paid for sheep that got attacked by dogs.
So I would suggest you that you write down, like.
I know.
I know that.
For each thing that you need an amount for and put down what you think is a reasonable amount.
Get back to basics.
And bring it back to the board. We can look at it and then we can adjust from there.
We can, he can not here, special meeting, we can do a special.
We're here to make money.
We can take him all over the fines.
Yep.
And how to rate, cause like you, you get a cow loose dog, it might be a twenty-five dollar fine. But now you find out he doesn't have a license. You're gonna add another fine on there because he doesn't have a license.
But there's ways, there's ways to do that kind of stuff. So if, so if you, if he.
Just saying.
Catches a dog, his dog is loose and the dog isn't licensed and there's a twenty-five dollar fine for an unlicensed dog. As long as they license the dog, you waive the twenty-five dollar fine.
No, I agree with that. I'm just.
Right, right. I mean, there's ways around that.
Right.
If they're, if they're gonna be a cordial and.
But if you have a licensed dog that's continually loose, then you, you know, you gotta find them or whatever.
But obviously what you're doing is working because people, you're getting less repeat.
Yeah.
Situations because they are consciously, um, reacting.
I'd kinda like to see the thing bought under control without a whole bunch of expenses. Also, that let people get along. Let's figure out, we gotta, we gotta animal control guy, let him do his job.
Yep.
And let's, let's work with them.
And that's fine, but he's asking us for assistance to help him with.
I heard that point already. I, I'm not crazy about, uh, the, what they're charging in Montpelier or Burlington. I'm not crazy about that. What does Stanford charge? What does, uh, uh, Shastbury charge? They, they got dog officers. They must charge somebody. Somebody must charge something.
Yep.
So I, I totally agree with Ronnie. It's a, we do, I think we all are, wanna address it, but it's not, uh.
Yeah, I want them under control.
I wasn't.
We're looking.
For a rock solid answer tonight. It's just, it's just information I need.
Yep.
Right. So we, we just need to see what the local, what, uh, towns more comparable to us do and, and kind of choose from that. And, uh, and I like the idea of what you're doing with the, you know, this is your, this is your one free warning.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a, I think that's the right approach. We're, we're looking to change behavior, not to make money.
Yeah, we're looking to try to get the thing under control and get less animals that nobody cares about. Like the one tied by the railroad track or whatever you wanna call it.
Disgusting.
Yeah.
But we gotta do it in, in a manner that, I mean, there's people out there, you know, ten dollars don't seem like much to some people. Ten dollars is a lot to a lot of people.
Mm-hmm.
In this town. There's a lot of poor ones in this town.
Okay. Are you all set?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Coming in and thank you for doing such a wonderful job. Keep it up. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Paul.
Okay, moving on to Cynthia Studdard on accounting and back office process update. Cynthia, are you there?
I am. Hello, everybody.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Megan, I need to share.
So can I just say something about that whole conversation you just had?
Sure.
When I was the manager in Putney, I would have, I would have been in heaven to have an animal control officer like you just have.
He's doing an awesome job.
And, uh, it was something we battled with continually, could never find anybody, but I did just pull up their ordinance and it's online. We rewrote that ordinance, I think a couple of years before I was there and they have, their fines are fifty dollars for first offense, but if you don't contest it, they waive twenty-five of it. So there's a layered, um, they give warnings too. So you might wanna, that's a comparable sized town, I would say. I mean, maybe it's a little bigger, but. Um, so anyways, uh, you, you guys are lucky to have somebody. It is not easy to find an animal control officer. So that's not what I'm here for, but.
Thank you for your input.
So I don't, do you want me, or Tim, are you gonna talk first and then I'll?
Yeah, I'll go through the slides and then we can do a little recap of all. So what we wanted to do tonight was to, um, let Ellen, myself and Cynthia kind of bring you up to speed on what we've been doing accounting wise through the last six months or so. Um, and it falls into about four buckets and I don't have a lot of slides, so it's not gonna be long. I'm gonna speed through them so that we can, uh, get through this. Um, but one of the first things we, we started to do when we, um, knew we wanted to update things is you knew we had the cash receipts module, which we've kind of done an update. But we went over a new, um, Emmerich, which is our accounting software. And we, um, really focused on utilization of it to the highest degree. So we went through and we started determining, okay, what little button or feature does it have that we should be using? Let's turn it on. Um, let's make all the modules talk together, which a lot of times, um, hadn't occurred in the past. They had just been turned off. So we turned them on so that everything was streamlined. So if you did something in tax administration and went to the GL and we didn't have to do a lot of GL entries to compensate for that. Um, other things we've been doing is we're evaluating the planning and zoning module, um, to see if it will add, um, the same sort of utilization for us in that area. We don't have anything right now that tracks any of that. Um, we've added the Lister card lookup to the website. Um, and essentially what it's done is it's made it a lot less, um, user intensive. So we can enter something and let the system tell us what needs to be done and, and let it kind of tell us if there's an error somewhere or a check in a balance. So it's so far, so good with that.
Um, so one, one quick question.
Yep.
When you're evaluating, and this is a zoning question.
Yep.
When you're evaluating that, is it planning and zoning module?
Yep.
Do you think, and it may be too early to tell that, but would you, do you think that we would be able to add um, the permit applications as they come through to our website so that, um, Bob Jarvis could go on the website and see what permit applications are out there for zoning for right now?
So.
Just got turned in.
Yep. So, um, Megan and I sat down with them and had a one over. Um, you're the last person to bring in and kind of look through it. And this is, we'll have to, I'll have to double check, but something's telling me that yes, they have that functionality. Um, there's a cost associated with that look up.
Okay.
And I think.
I didn't know if it was something we already paid for.
Nope, it doesn't come with the module. It's something extra if I'm remembering right. And what we determined was it didn't make a lot of sense for the volume of permits that we had.
I, I was, I.
But if it's there, if down the road, it's something we want to evaluate. And I can, I can verify all that, but I think that's what's coming to.
I was thinking if it was part of what we're already paying for, if we could add that, it would just be another um, way to utilize what we're already paying for and have it so that, you know, somebody sees, you know, Jamie's seeing something going on next door. He could pull it up and see if there's a permit pulled for what, whatever's going on next to his house.
Right. It does, the functionality itself for what we do has a lot of good things in it. Um, for us to have a repository of permits and to allow, um, for instance, the listeners to look into it and to see what, what parcel has a permit pulled or something.
I was just, I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Perhaps in the checks and balances with the other eyes because as things get inputted, it sounds, um, by an individual, it's getting shared in, cause a, a piece you're responsible for pops up and all that also.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep. And it would, it would also be a repository for us to keep
By first.
The applications and it has a way to calculate the price and all of that sort of thing. So it, it's, it's something that, uh, looks promising. We just haven't made the final decision on any of that yet. Um, so then the other piece that we started to get into was fund creation. Um, what that means is on our previous balance sheets, we have a lot of funds underneath this section called fund balances. And basically what it is like the reappraisal where we save, I'm gonna call them saving account because it's kind of an easier way to think of it. Um, audit fund, all of that, all of that stuff. But what we started to do was create funds within the accounting system for those so that they are tracked separately. Then the, um, general, um, balance sheet. Um, it also provides a lot more transparency into that fund. So if someone asks, what do we have for the reappraisal fund? We can literally give a sheet that basically tells you how much is in that fund. Um, and then from a, uh, expense and revenue perspective, you can actually pull that same um, side of the equation and see what's been spent for reappraisal and that sort of thing.[1653.78] And we've also, what it's done is we've gone back, Ellen's gone back to all of the old funds, and we've gone through all of the town reports, and we're starting to accumulate and document when that fund was voted on. What were the parameters that allow it to exist and allow us to use it? Which is great, because what it does is it gives us, especially at budgeting and for use of the monies, it gives us a lot of, what do you call, like a way to go and say, okay, what can we use this money for?
Right, well, it gives us parameters and guidelines, right?
Right, right, right. And who, and who approved them, was it voter approval, did the board start, you know, where did they come, because years ago are different than laws now.
Right, right.
So, so yeah, it's, it's gonna be a while before you guys get that.
No, that's fine.
But we're really, I mean, how many town reports have I reread?
Pulled out of the vault and everything. So this is the, the way we keep track of fund balances now. You've probably seen this, if not, it's been in all the town reports, it's something poor Ellen has to do manually through Excel and keep track of price, of what the amounts are and everything. This will go away. Eventually, it will no longer be necessary, and each fund will have a sheet like this. That I was referring to, you can pull on a NEMRIC and say, here it is. So you kind of see that 2350 there, I'm gonna skip back for you, matches the 2350 in the voter machine fund on this spreadsheet. So pretty much what it means is the accounting system is going to be telling us what are undesignated balances, what is designated, and where it's at.
So it's gonna be.
So this, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, bud.
So, so voter, voter machine fund, and then move to the next one?
Yep.
This, uh, this is just that one line item.
Correct.
Right.
And then there's fun. Right, and how it's, how it's been spanned or how it hasn't been touched.
So, so that account number of 13310 is on this?
So don't, so it's.
You can't go by your.
Don't go by the account number, because that's sort of.
We're changing those.
Well, so, okay, so my question would be then, where it says account number, would that account number appear, whatever, let's say it's account one. All right, because would that appear on the next line?
So I like where you're going with this.
Yep, so there, there's our account number.
What makes it, what makes this fund special and says it's the voter machine is that all the account numbers are gonna start with 116.
Okay.
Okay, but what this does.
Its own, very own little one.
Right, so, so what I'm, my question is, that's gonna make it really easy to follow, because that account number is gonna track all the way through.
Right, right, and so the way this will eventually work is at budget time, on the general budget, there'll be a line that says voter machine fund. And let's, I'm just gonna use hypotheticals, we'll say we're going to budget 5,000 for that fund. If it's approved by the voters and, and you all, and it goes forward, we move that 5,000 to account 116.
Right.
And then, let's just say, two years later, we need to buy a voting machine, and we want to spend, say it's 3,000, and we have 5,000 in there. We can say we're going to pull money and put it in a revenue line from the voter machine fund.
At budget time.
At budget time.
Plan ahead, and we're gonna, so instead of doing the budget adjustment in June.
Right.
After we've already done, this money is going to already be in there, so this will be a change that we're working on for you for this next budget FY.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty two, twenty.
Twenty two, twenty three, right?
Twenty two, twenty three, for the FY 23 budget, yes.
It provides a lot of transparency.
It will be straight up, there'll be no questions asked, people will know.
Yep, yeah.
Nice.
Nice.
And, and of course, the, the, the full summary would still be available somewhere.
Right.
Where you get just the list, like we had at the beginning, the, the advantage the first one had that the other ones don't.
Yes, yes, yes.
The paper that has.
So, yeah, we'll get there, but yes, that's, that's possible. All right, so internal process improvement. So you know, the original goal, and I'll let Cynthia speak to this a little bit later, was NEMRIC was there to support us in doing that check and balance. So what we've been able to do over the last three months is we've been able to bring that in-house and really separate the duties so that whether it's Megan, Julie, Ellen, or myself, we're all checking each other and doing what we need to do to have the separation of duties for the checks and balances. So for instance, for GL entries, Ellen and myself are either entering them, and then the other person is reviewing them and signing off on them, which we used to have Cynthia doing. Bank reconciliations, I've been doing those for the last three months. And for AP, Megan and myself are entering and coding all the invoices, and then Ellen, before we cut the checks, is reviewing them. And off the AP ledger, making sure the account is correct and it's been, so we're catching errors way before the check is actually printed, where we can correct it easily without having to enter another GL entry to make it.
To avoid all those GL entries.
Right.
Of corrections that you kept seeing on top of the AP and signing, yes.
This is following the Bonnadeo report that we got, then that was our recommendation from them, and that was one of the things that triggered us doing this with NEMRIC.
Right, so, and when, if the discrepancy is found, what's the process for correcting it?
We fix it immediately. So what happens is whoever finds it, we sit down and we figure it out. That's the great thing, we found one this last month with bank reconciliations, and it was a, just an error that happened through data entry that we were able to locate and prevent from happening again in the future.
Right, right, then what I'm getting at is because it was one of the recommendations, right? If, if, if you put some numbers together, and then Ellen looked at the numbers, and then Ellen found an error, Ellen doesn't correct it and then send it through.
No, I go back to Tim.
Go back to Tim.
And we both sign off on it.
And, and so, so that's, that's where we don't need that general ledger correction.
Yeah.
Right?
All the time.
All the time. It's, it's corrected before it's even entered or the check's even cut.
I, I don't go into accounts payable at all.
Right, so it's just, it's just a correction that's made before the check's cut, so there's no need for any entry of any sort, it's just a correction that's made in-house.
Correct.
Correct, correct, right. So what this has allowed us to do is free up Cynthia's time for more strategic, so she's been helping us with some more of the strategic initiatives, which, you know, we'll get into here in a second as far as GL, sort of cleanup work, and then she suggested other areas that will start to use it, like for policy upkeep and bringing current and things of that nature. Sort of the bigger picture when it comes to the accounting and the financial aspects.
Beautiful.
All right, so general ledger upkeep, so our general ledger hasn't really been sort of brushed off and cleaned up in many, many years. So what we started to do is, sorry, you were asking about accounting codes, so we, there's all kinds of reports you can pull, which is one that's in front of you, and I'll show it a little bit later, but I gave you a copy, so it's a little more close and readable. But you couldn't even pull these reports, because the same account had been used over, like, whether it was the wastewater, the road, or the GL, the regular general account, for different purposes. And it would all be globally goupdy, and you couldn't really even understand what it was. So we started to separate those and to make, make one account number, say 1100 for cell phones across all. So you can see a total for how much, what do we use for cell phones.
So, Tim, so it, general, road, wastewater, still separated, it still has like the 100 as the general, the 200 is the road, the 444 is the wastewater, but it goes 100 dash 1100.
Right.
200 dash 1100, 444 dash 1100, so when he pulls this report, whoop, it tells you right there every expense for the same exact thing.
Right.
For the cell phone.
So we've.
Whatever, yes, whatever that was, the cell phones.
And what it does is it, why don't it make budgeting a lot easier? And it brings a lot more transparency into what's actually happening. We've, we've, it allows you to track errors quicker and catch them right away, just because there's a number there that doesn't make sense for being there.
Right.
And what we've done so far is we've pretty much gotten the balance sheet counts, this is all accounting jargon, and we'll move, we'll move towards the expense and the revenue pieces that will affect more of the budgeting that we'll all experience, but it will make it a lot easier. There'll be less accounts, there'll be more concise, there'll be, you know, what's wages in one is wages in the other, and it will just, you'll be able to see it.
Right.
So this, and I'm sorry, readers at home, it's kind of small, but the one that's in front of you, if you, you know, this is the balance sheet for the town of Pownall, and you literally can go down now and see the general fund, the road fund, the wastewater, special revenue is a conglomerate of several, but it's different things. But the beauty of it is, if you look down, you can see sort of where there's breaks of like checking accounts, funds and trust. And then you see where the number is, and you know it's a revenue fund. Grants, you know, a particular grant would have its own line, and here's our reserve funds. So you can literally see, and this is sort of what you were asking, if you can see a listing of the totals.
Yep.
And then it just goes down to each of the different categories. So it looks, you know, the balance sheet is two, two pages, but it's nice and concise, and this is consolidated. We can pull it unconsolidated, so you'd have one per fund.
Which is a lot of funds.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just gonna tell you, that's many, many pages now, it's not just seven pages anymore, but, but it gives you that individual page if you just wanted that specific voter machine fund, you wanted to know exactly.
Right, because you can pull that out of this.
Just that one, if you wanted more information.
Right.
We're tracking the new town hall in the same manner, we're tracking the ARPA funds in the same manner, so you can literally pull that fund account and see everything that's going on. Okay, that's all I had, so we'll stop sharing so we can see Cynthia.
There she is.
Is my face like huge on your screen?
No, it's just kind of off to the side, Cynthia, how are you?
I'm not like taking up the whole screen, okay. So Tim pretty much covered everything, I think what I want to add to the conversation is just that you guys should really be proud of the work that's been done between the select board, between your staff, Rebecca's work in the beginning with me. You guys really are a success story of pulling together as a community and just getting this work done. Our goal at NIMRIC is to offer our services to make sure you're using the software to its fullest capacity for the accounting system and how you're wanting to track your financials. Then it's to fill in when you need capacity to do the work that, that is needed to be done, to offer that support. And then really, our ultimate goal is to always leave you on your own, and we're, we try to work ourselves out of a job, and this particular one is the classic example of what we like to do, because you, I mean, I think, when did I come there, it was in August, maybe, and I literally said in August, you guys really don't need me to do some of this stuff anymore. You know, let's, let's switch the gears a little bit, and, um, let's use my time, I think you guys signed a contract with us back in February, it was a year-long contract. Let's use my time, you know, that we have left, or if you want to continue it, whatever you want to do, to do what Tim said, let's work on maybe some policies and procedures, some bigger picture things. If Tim has questions about the budgeting process and how we can make it work in NIMRIC, and really focus on that, because the day-to-day work and the segregations of duties and all of the things that you kind of got dinged on your audit, those have all been taken care of. The, the general ledger, one of the big things that was focused on was the number of general ledger entries, and they, Tim and Ellen talked about that tonight. But one of the things that was a very simple switch in the beginning was to change the ability for Ellen to post an entry for, let's say, bank interest as a revenue entry instead of an adjusting journal entry. So, or a bank charge as an expense instead of an adjusting journal entry. Adjusting journal entries should be saved for like missed postings of an account number, and you have to fix it. So that eliminated a lot of journal entries that I think they were seeing and not really focusing on the fact that they weren't really adjusting journal entries.
Right.
So that was a huge, just quick click of a button for us to do that, so. And then the linking of the software that eliminated a lot of the manual work, so I just, you guys should be really proud of the work that's been done, and I want to continue working with the town, but I also didn't want to continue working with the town on stuff that you just really didn't need me for anymore. There's no sense in me signing off on journal entries if you have two people in the office that can double check each other, or three people, or, or me doing the bank recs if Tim can do it and Ellen's doing the work. So that's really kind of where we're at, but I just, I, kudos to you guys, I really, it's really been fun to work with everybody, I hope you keep me around a little while for the rest of it, but I just, I think, I, I mean, and, and Tim and Ellen, with very little direction on what the software could do, they just turned it into the everyday, do the work between the two of them, so they're a good, they're a good pair there that you have working for you, so keep them around.
Glad to, thank you.
All great.
So much.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been fun, I told them at work today, you guys are definitely one of my success stories, and I can't take a ton of the credit, I told them what the software will do, and like I said, very little direction, they kind of took it and went with it. So that's where we're at, so I hope you keep me around for a little while, I, I think the policies and procedures is a good place for you guys to focus a little bit too, just to get those in writing and make sure you adopt them, a lot of the, you know, the ARPA money's gonna look for some of those things, and maybe you already have some in place, but we could review them with you and, and see what those look like, and if they're compliant with what you need. So, does anybody have any questions for me?
No, I just want to say something to you, Cynthia, because you have not gotten rid of me at all, because you know I'm gonna call you. But thank you so much, and thank you for talking me down when I needed to be talked down, it's, it was great, it's been great, and I'm sure we will have more of those conversations as we go along.
Yeah.
But it's.
Yeah, I think we need to keep the relationship going, yeah.
It's great, it's great, we've all done well, and it's been great, thank you so much.
I thought I was gonna get to visit in-person Pownal a little bit more than I did, but.
I know.
Well, you're always welcome.
Yes, please come by.
But no, kudos to you guys.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a hand up, I don't know if they have a question for me.
Megan, is there a hand up?
Jim.
Yes, Jim?
Are we allowing those questions now?
Hello.
Are we, are we allowing those?
At the end, unless it's specifically for Cynthia.
Well, I'm not sure if it's specifically for Cynthia, but first of all, I'd like to just compliment her on helping out the town so much. This is all very helpful, and I think that we're moving forward and everything like that. And I'm sure that we're on a, a good road toward the future, so thank, thank you, Cynthia, very much.
Oh, you're welcome, anytime, that's what we're here for.
I know, Ellen has really, she has done a good job trying to, she, we're in the fourth dimension when it comes to finances with municipalities. And I think Ellen has tried to do the best she can with everything, and I thank you for your help, and I thank you, Ellen, for what you're doing. And also just, Tim, thank you very much for what you're doing to come bring this all together.
All right, thank you. Hey, anything else for Cynthia? Thank you, Cynthia, you have a great day.
You guys call me anytime if you need something, okay?
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on to Jonathan Cooper on potential panel municipal planning grant application. Yes, you may.
All right.
Fronting in town.
Tell Bob to move that bottle.
All right, it took a while, oh, I did it again.
John, who cares?
It's empty.
Too bad, nobody on seat numbers.
Not focus on myself, it's so hard.
Don't even look at that.
Yeah, right, I'm, I'm here. It's nice to see some of y'all again after a while, but if we haven't met, my name is Jonathan Cooper, and I'm the Community and Economic Development Specialist at the BRCRC. And so I'm here to take a little time to talk about, I guess, three things, one was the BitLarge MPG, I know that that's something that's familiar to the Select Board, the last MPG for Pownal was 2019. The sixth such award in the last 20 years or so of the program. And then to stress this particular proposal that we sort of worked up for your consideration and run by the Planning Commission, to answer any questions that you may have, and then talk a little bit about the potential for municipal resolution, which is required for us to move, or for the town to move forward if it so chooses. I believe, have you had an opportunity to see a sort of a draft of this particular project about some sort of economic development considerations with the municipal planning grant? If not, I'm happy to give a brief rundown, that's kind of what I was here to talk about.
I think a brief rundown, yeah.
So, so I think, maybe, you know, the MPG is there to assist municipalities with sort of planning activities on a year-on-year basis, as opposed to having to, you know, wait for a five-year, you know, plan renewal. So something that came up here was the thought was that perhaps a study that can identify some potential sites to increase economic development activity within the town of Pownal. To do so, the project, as we envisioned it, would develop citing criteria for commercial, industrial, residential, and mixed-use projects, so four distinct scenarios. Given constraints of zoning, you know, proximity to state highways, environmental constraints, et cetera. And we were hoping the project would result in, as we envisioned it, was identifying 10 preliminary sites in the town for each scenario. And then identifying up to five of, of that, you know, sort of shortlist, most preferred sites for each scenario. Reviewing economic development programs and incentives that could be used for each of those four scenarios. And then any potential changes to language, the town plan or bylaws that would be necessary or would help bring that about, we could sort of work on a draft of that. Or, and when I say we, I mean, the consultants, as, it's an important point to make, that it's not something that just goes to the Regional Planning Commission. If an award is made and the town wishes to move forward, it's a issuing an RFP, a procurement process, the public sector and the private sector each have a fair shot at the work. The work, as we'd envisioned it, we saw, foresaw a budget of approximately $17,000. As a reminder, MPG awards cover 90% of the project cost, so something in the order of $1,700 from the town of Pownal to match what's, that's, that grant would be. The, some of the deadlines that are relevant here is a November 1st application date. You'd find out on December 1st if Pownal was one, was selected to, to move forward. Then the choice to accept the funds and move forward, or to say, you know, we'll hold off, something's changed. Then the choice to accept the funds and move forward or to say, you know, we'll hold off, something's changed. But a project start would probably be around February, um, after that RFP process that I mentioned. Work has to be completed by May of 2023. I felt like it's a little far out. Thought the sort of scope we'd come up with December, January. So the end of the year or just a little bit thereafter. Be happy to answer any questions or, um, any thoughts that people may have at this time. But this was something we'd had a good conversation with the Planning Commission with. They're interested in, like, this seemed like it was moving in a good direction. But really an important part, um, for me here was to hear some of your thoughts on, does that approach of let's think about industry, let's think about commercial, let's think about mixed-use, let's think about housing, does that make sense? What are your thoughts on that? And is there any sort of questions about the process that you'd have at this time?
So the, uh, when you were talking about the scenarios, um, yeah, could you describe a scenario? I mean, really, what do you mean by a scenario?
So certainly I think maybe the best way to, the way I was envisioning it and we'd envisioned it was that if we were trying to develop criteria by which we can identify what are the places with the best potential in the town for industrial development, for commercial development, knowing that each of these, and that's sort of what I meant by scenario was, um, even though it's a little bit of a loose term, but that knowing that site demands for housing will share some characteristics for site demands for commercial or for industrial, but there'll be some separation between them. You know, what makes a great place for, um, storefront may not make a great place for residents or for, um, a factory, but we want to sort of keep all those options open. It's a say, well, if we look at the town from each of these sort of different vantage points, which areas of town stand out, which, um, locations have the most promise? And so that was an important part of what we had in mind as well is when we were working on those, that initial list of 10 for each of these sort of four sets. We envisioned having some, some outreach to the individuals, entities, wherever, you know, parcels that was to gauge whether there's something that was of interest to them, something that they would rather we not pursue. Feeling that, um, a project that would have made that kind of, that tread on someone else's territory wasn't really the way we wanted to go about it. Um, and I don't know, Bob, if that addressed the question.
Uh, no, it did. It did. Absolutely. And so, and it looks like something that, uh, I mean, recently we adopted our bylaws and one of the things we, that we asked the Planning Commission to go, but to go, we adopted them as is, and then just asked them if they could find someplace that, uh, that might be suitable for, uh, for industrial because we wanted to, we, we don't want to slam the door on, on, on a large employer coming to Pownal. And right now we have no place to, to put them if they, even if they wanted to come here.
I see.
So, um, and so, uh, and I imagine that's one of the scenarios, right? Well, that and, and, and everything else, right? That would be, these are the areas we found for industrial. And then, and in addition to that, here's some potential commercial, potential residential, and it's just sort of mapping it out.
I think, uh, so, so if I understood it correctly, you have these four potential areas of development. And this, um, commission, if we were awarded this grant, they're going to come back and give us the five best places for those four different areas of development.
Whoever we hire.
I think it's the, yeah, exactly. So they would come back, give us the grant. We would then put out an RFP.
Right, right. Okay. Yeah, exactly. We would hire someone and then that would, right. Okay. So I, I, in my mind, I knew that was the process, but I just didn't say that process. In my own mind, I knew, I knew, well, you're, so thank you for correcting that. Um, and then, and then they would, after we did the RFP, they would come back and say, uh, site one, two, three, four, and five here are best for, um, the housing scenario. Right?
Yes. As we've seen, yeah. Thought being that economic development looks like a lot of different things. Sometimes it's more people, sometimes it's more jobs, sometimes it's more opportunities for entrepreneurship. And so that was sort of why we had these different lenses, you might say.
So, so, I mean, I, I, from what I'm hearing right now, I'm in total agreement with that because that gives us, um, somebody else other than our Planning Commission to look. Uh, it gives us a whole different view, uh, you know, an outside view.
Right.
Um, well, I think that's actually what we were thinking when we asked the Planning Commission to, to evaluate industrial was that we needed to reach out to somebody with that expertise.
Right.
Because we weren't, we weren't saying, uh, we weren't asking them to just pick an area. We were asking them to, to, to do whatever it takes.
Right. Exactly. So, so this kind of takes the burden off of them to do this project. And then, and then, um, you know, and, and we get the answers that we were looking for as a select board.
Right.
Excuse me, in, in, you know, you know, and not just the industrial either, it gives us the answers for the other three areas.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah. And it felt like the way that we tried to structure it was a way that was also of interest to what the, the funders look at is they decide, well, what, where do we allocate this funding? And the thought is we want to make sure there's a, a clear connection between, you know, this, this work and the goals of that program, knowing that getting to, um, to sort of assist the Planning Commission with some of these, um, some of these concerns, some of these questions is, you know, as an economic development specialist, I, I like seeing these, um, programs accommodate this mindset, this frame of thinking. So that's, uh, part of how, um, Michael Batchier, Jim Sullivan, Catherine Bryas and I had sort of shopped this up a little bit and hoping to, we think this is somewhat distinct, um, application. I don't think there's been a lot of applications that have attempted to do this, this way. So we think this is going to present something compelling to, uh, the Department of Housing, Community Development. But we did want to talk about it tonight, knowing we had a little bit of a time.
But that was a trigger, this was a trigger from our pushback to the Planning Commission.
Right. No, right.
And.
Right. I understand that.
We're hoping for a broader, and that's what you, you brought us to do. Good job bringing.
So what do we need to do tonight?
So if, if people are feeling like it's a, um, a good thing to pursue, uh, there is, the municipal resolution for the planning grants is sort of requirements. And there are, sort of took the liberty of filling out one with some of the names. I have copies that people like to look at it. Uh, there's, um, there are five things that take place here in this document. One is that, um, legislative, there's legislative body, the municipality enters into and agrees to the requirements and obligations, including a commitment to match funds should they move forward with the grant.
And that's, that's 10%.
Yeah, it's 10%. And, um, there are three, um, individuals that need to be sort of identified. And this is where you might recall from 2019, interacting with the state's, um, grant management, online grant management system, um, called Gears. It's, um, it's, it's functional, but it's a little, it's, um, they're not, they're not wasting our tax dollars on user experience. But they need to identify two individuals who either the chief executive officer, i.e. members of the Select Board, who could be what they call a municipal authorizing official. So two Select Board members that are sort of, that have, um, that'll be, have accounts with Gears to, you know, manage some of the, the activities. And then a third person who's the grant administrator. So they want two people for one role. So there's some redundancy. Another person who serves as the grant administrator. We have had some good conversations, as you know, with the Planning Commission around this, but we will be having a sort of final meetup with them on the 19th. I hope to get Tiffany's signature at that time. But so, so names and signatures are the, uh, the best thing for us today to sort of bring this municipal resolution forward so that we have that lined up for the, the application process. Which is a long way of saying, can I have your autograph?
I mean, I, I think we need to, I think we need to make a motion that we move or don't move.
Exactly.
Yeah. And then, and then go from there.
Yeah. And I thought it was a, I thought it was a multi-step process, right? I thought it was a, first we, first we apply for the grant, we, we, we get the grant.
Right, right.
Um, and then we find the consultant.
Correct.
Is that true?
That's correct. Yeah. Um, that is part of the, the whole process is having that, uh, that vetting process, that procurement process where you'd be able to issue the RFP. And that's, that is what would be taking place between December 1st, when the awards are announced, and whatever time in early, you know, '22, um, and you'd have respondents and then make your selection.
I move that we, um, proceed with this municipal planning grant application, um, presented to us tonight by Mr. Cooper.
Is there, can I get a copy of?
Yeah. There's one without.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Well, can we take a minute to?
Oh, yes, you may.
Thank you. So, so this is just a, this is just the application for the grant, is that right?
This is a portion of it. Um, we, there's, there's more verbiage to come through, but this is an essential, a necessary part of applying is having the municipal resolution, um, on file.
Yes.
Uh, so that is sort of one of the, okay, did you check off this box? One of the boxes.
Without, without us saying, um, move forward, then it doesn't, it's a dead.
And so we are available to assist whoever, um, from the town is in that municipal authorizing official, et cetera, those positions. Uh, we can assist those named individuals with just some of the, the language around the application, you know, navigating the grant system. That's something that we, our office obviously has some experience with. And so that's where we can then hand it off to powers that be. And we stand down until a decision is made. And then the next thing the BRCRC would do in that instance is develop its own response to the RFP.
So the grant administrator would be the one to write the checks after the fact, right? And oversee the account?
I believe that's, that's correct.
Yeah, yes. Some of it, so.
Yes.
And so the, the, the motion is just to proceed with the, with the municipal planning.
Right. That's my motion. Proceed with this municipal planning application.
Yeah. All right. I'm good.
Is everybody else up? All those in favor? I opposed. I have it.
So, uh, should, um, is there a, for this piece of paper to stay here? Something you'd like to sign at this time and then I'll just take it back with me or leave it here for, um, Tiffany?
I'd say we sign and.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one's got all our names on it on the back. We just got it signed.
Done right now and then we don't have to come back. He doesn't have to come back down or anything.
Long drive from Bennington.
Well, if you're like me, you got a lot of stuff going on, so.
Um, so yeah, I'm not.
We have to come up, we have to come up with all the, or, you know.
Right.
What I have here is the, the two Select Board members and then our grant administrator. And I mean, my opinion is the grant administrator should be.
Ten, absolutely.
And then, you know, the two Select Board members, it kind of doesn't really matter.
And how does the Planning Commission fit into that?
So we, so the Planning Commission, um, the chair there also needs to sort of sign saying that the Planning Commission voted as well to, they are on board as, as well. In the, um, in the project scope that we'd put together, we had a few touchpoints with the Planning Commission sort of to finalize the scope of work or to, to come to that, like, actually, this is where the standards and expectations. And then to bring the criteria that we developed to them for some feedback. Our first pass at some spatial analysis is the, what looks like it's, um, how does this look to you? Makes sense here? So we have a dialogue with them throughout the project process or the consultants would, like we do.
You've got to fill it in for myself.
I thought Mike and Angie had.
Yeah, I don't think, Angie and I haven't signed it yet. Who are we to, who do we want as the, um, two Select Board members on the, um, on the application?
Well, usually the chair is and then somebody else. Chair, me and you?
I'm fine with that. I just.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
We have to have, we just have to have two people on there and that's.
Is that okay? All right.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Ronnie, you okay with that?
Yeah, all right.
But Tiffany took and said that this was out there and what triggered you after we pushed back on the?
All right. So then I will be.
Just made a request.
Yes.
I'm just.
First and you'll be second. Is that correct? So I go here.
Process.
Yeah, that's fine.
Working and communicating.
Whatever, whatever works for me and you.
Yeah, no, just get it done.
Yep.
Getting, you gotta be getting tired.
Actually, I'm okay today.
Oh, pumpkin.
She took a triple shot before she's.
No.
Monster.
Did have a rough day. It was quite busy today.
I don't want to hear it. You had a rough day. I'll trade you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Yes, thank you. Have a good night.
Be the same.
Okay, moving on to Huzek Hydro net metering agreement extension. Did everybody get their email and read it?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Does anybody have a problem with it?
I'm okay with it now.
Yeah, because we can get out in 10, every 10 years we have the option. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And they.
Both have the option, right.
That was my problem.
Yes. They can get out, we can get out.
I'm, I'm fine with having that option.
Understanding what we're talking about.
That's what we all wanted.
Just want to give our future Select Boards.
Exactly.
I had a problem with it before. Obviously, we all did.
Yes.
Yes. There should never be an option where you can't get out of something.
I move that we sign the net metering agreement extension with the changes on, um, opting out.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? I opposed. Guys have it. Thank you.
One discretion on that. I gotta tell them that they ought to get them trees off of that dam. Two of them hanging right over the dam.
Okay.
Complete trees.
Okay. Can you pass that on to them, Tim?
Well, I was talking to Wendy about it just the other day and I made a note for myself.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right. Town hall update. Is that Tim or Mike or both?
Hmm, probably both. Yeah. Yeah. You want to go?
Sure. Let me see where to start. It's up. I did the walk, my first walk through today. So that was exciting to actually see the spaces and, um, see where we're all going to be eventually. We completed the concrete and the excavation. So that's good news. Eric is putting together sort of the list of what he needs to do and what we need to do back to Preferred Builders for sort of a punch list. So we'll be sending that to them this week and then.
Um, yeah, that punch list goes to the customer service representative at, um, Preferred Builders. We have started the, um, parking lots. We, we put those out, um, sort of for bid. We, we put it on our paper of record. We, um, put it on our website and I personally called four contractors in the town that do larger scale projects like the parking lot and, and that kind of stuff. Jeff Miller and Bazan Excavation, um, Richard Bazan from Bazan Excavation were the only two that bid on the parking lots and that kind of stuff. So, um, the bids are here. So we awarded, um, Dicky Bazan the parking lots, um, excavation, which is, uh, coming along quite nicely after I took a look today, um, out there. And I haven't been involved in a whole lot of it in the last week or so. Been a little bit busy, but, um, we're, we're, that's coming along really good. Um, we have a plan in place. More than likely weather dependent, we're, we're not going to have the lower parking lot done. Unless we, you know, our, we're planning on not having it done because weather's going to kill us. So my directive, uh, my team's directive to, um, in our decision was to, um, focus on the upper parking lot so that we can open the building and use the building. Because the lower parking lot, we don't really need.
Right away?
We do need the upper one. So that was the team. We decided that. And that's the directive we gave Dicky. So that's where he was.
Okay. Just ask a question. So does this bid for both parking lots? So if they only did the top parking lot, will they come back and do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. The, the bid is for both parking lots. The upper parking lot is priority so that we can get in.
Gotcha. Okay.
Get in and out. Now, it may not be blacktopped and whatever. We're, we're going to focus on trying to get the handicap parking spaces. I'm going to call it hard coated because I'm not sure if we're going to go with concrete or blacktop. It depends on when they shut the blacktop plant down, what we end up doing as far as having that handicap parking spaces hard coated. The rest of it may be dirt until spring. It's, it's weather. We got to play the weather and, and what, what happens. And so, so we're in really good shape with that. I'd like to go ahead and, and talk with Jeff Miller about, I'm going to go ahead and talk with him about doing some of the, the sidewalk work and the, and the, um, and the, um, topsoiling and the finish grading and that kind of stuff. He can get in here and do that. The drainage and stuff is. The drainage and stuff is all being put in by, there's a bunch of drains that has to go in, Dicky's doing all of that, the ditch out there for the power has dug the conduits in the ground, I noticed that tonight. What else, Tim, what am I missing?
See, they got the roof done.
Yeah, that was Preferred Builders, they pulled out of here yesterday when I was here, we ran into a little ledge, took care of that today. We pulled out the big tree out there, the shrub, and I'd love to get some, we had that, we had that group that was, Rebecca was involved, had brought us in with the, for the bees and that kind of stuff, you know, we can do, we can do a lot of stuff on that side hill, that, that side hill is pretty steep, maybe we do something on there where it's all easily, whatever, you know, landscaping can come later.
Well, and Margaret Cody really wants to do, wants to create that.
That's the one, that, right, that's the one, Rebecca, I couldn't think of her name, thank you.
I'll reach out to her again, and I'll see if she was able to find any extra volunteers, and I will help her push that forward, right?
Right, perfect, thank you. I, I couldn't, I couldn't remember, you know, we, we had, we had, Charlie the Bat was here again yesterday doing a little bit of, you know, we ran into some ledge, so we kind of were throwing around a bunch of different options, and then we just went back to our original plan and hammered the ledge out and moved where we needed to be. I think we're, I, I think we're in really good shape. Even though we were delayed a little bit in getting the building set, I still think we're in really good shape time wise, if we can, you know, if the weather holds on, you know, obviously we can get inside, but our subs are out here, they're doing their jobs. We're, you know, Mike Connors, I talked with him, um, what's today, today's Thursday, Tuesday, Tuesday we talked with Mike Connors, Mike Connors is on board. We had an extensive conversation about moving the schoolhouse. And if, if the weather, we won't get it done this fall, I mean, there's no, it's just not going to happen in 2021, I mean, there's no sense in even thinking that. He's thinking that, that if we have some decent weather over the winter, he's going to come down here and prepare the building, he's going to get it jacked up, he's going to get the steel under it, he's going to do what he needs to do to get the building moved early spring of 2022. I mean, that's, that's his goal, we, we had a pretty extensive conversation about it on, on Tuesday between Mike and I, and I haven't even shared that with you because we, or anybody else for that matter, because it just happened Tuesday afternoon after we left here.
Great.
So that's, that's about it, that's it in a nutshell, I guess, on the Town Hall, unless you guys have any questions on it, I can't think of anything else.
We doing money wise, we doing great.
Tim, Tim's putting, he's putting a whole spreadsheet together for us, Ronnie, the last time we looked at it was last week.
Yep, so what we were waiting for were those bits to come in, because we needed to get the costs for those pieces, I put that together and I give it to Eric, so he can go through where we've guessed and say aye or nay, and then we'll have a better number coming up, it's coming soon.
Yes, we're, at, at first appearance, we're, we're not in bad shape, I think, I think Tim and I feel that we're, I think Tim and I feel we're fairly comfortable where we're at, you know, right now, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to say that, because, because you never know, there's something, we, we've gone through some, we've gone through a couple of things on this project that we've been really lucky to be able to dodge some pretty major bullets on a couple of different things. It could have been, it could have been.
Catastrophe.
Well, I, I, it, it could have been expensive.
Yeah.
But we, we were able to dodge a couple of bullets on, on the thing and move it forward, and, and timing and the whole nine yards, so I don't really want to say that we're, because I don't want to jinx it, I just don't want to jinx what's going on, and I'm a firm believer in that, so, sorry. But I think, I think we're okay.
It looks great, and then once we have that spreadsheet together, of course, I mean.
We'll know a lot better.
And I, I would assume we're planning to keep it online, because that's, I mean, it is the taxpayers' money.
Absolutely.
So they, they need to be able to see how.
We're all paying taxes now, they realize it.
Right, and I mean, you know, it's not, it's not anything we're trying to, trying to keep away from anybody, Bob, we just, we just haven't been able to put, because we're waiting for the last couple pieces.
I was curious to see what was going on, that's.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's a legitimate question, Ronnie, for sure, I mean, I think, you know, we talked about this last week, waiting for the last couple of pieces to come in, and, and I think, I think we're okay.
Yeah, so without jinxing it, knock on linoleum, the, I think they've done a really good job of, of, of the cost control, especially after the, I know we had an increase that went to the ballot net last year. But yeah, keeping, keeping those costs in control with the curveballs that we've been given, it's, I, I've been pretty impressed, of course, I may whistle a different tune once they see all the numbers.
And we all may, I don't think so, I don't think so, Bob, but, I, you know, I, I will tell you, I will tell you this, and I will tell every taxpayer out there this, we have worked diligently, and I mean diligently, to keep the cost down at the, the absolute best that we could, and still put a quality product on that piece of ground.
And I know that's true.
We, we have, we have worked hard, the whole entire team has worked incredibly hard to try and keep that cost down, and that goes to, to our engineers, it goes, it goes to, to Gunno Associates, Charlie the Bat, the engineer, the concrete guy, every single person that's been involved in this project has worked incredibly hard to keep the cost down, we have made some decisions that we felt were, were cost effective short term and cost effective long term. That, you know, some, some minor changes here and there. So I, I, I've, I can lay my head on my pillow at night knowing that, that we worked really hard to, to do the best that we could, to put a quality product there and, and to keep the cost down the best that we could, I'm, I'm very comfortable with what we've done.
Well, it's the only reason I asked the question, because I wanted, wanted it brought up, so that, because I got people asking me, what's happening?
No, that's fine, I mean, sure, that's a legitimate question, for sure, I mean, you know, like I said, I, I can lay my head down at night comfortably, and I think Tim can, and, and, you know, knowing that we've done the absolute best that we could, given, given some of the things that we're going on too.
Great, thank you, I think you guys have all done a great job. Are you all set?
Yep, I don't, unless you guys have any questions.
Anybody have any more questions? Okay, moving on to fall cleanup on the cemeteries.
Oh, yeah, alright, so Tristan, who does our lawn mowing, mowing now, at the beginning of the season, came to us and recommended that we look into doing a fall cleanup, because he had to do a lot of upkeep at the beginning of the spring, because we've never really done fall cleanups. So what I told him was, at the end of the season, put together a quote for us, so that we can look it over, and so we're at the end of the season, here it is, and so what he's quoted to do is primarily the work in the cemeteries for $1,235 to go through and do additional, whether it's tree trimming or leaf cleanup at a particular cemetery that may need it, so that in the fall, or in the spring, sorry, that cleanup is easier.
Right, it's less, and.
Right. So it was a great idea, I thought we're well within budget on this particular line item, so, and the price seems reasonable, it's very comparable to what he's been charging for the other services he's been doing, so it may, makes sense.
So we're in budget for that?
Yes, yes.
So it's not going to cost anything over the budget?
No.
Did I make a motion to move forward with fall cleanup?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Stained?
I'm stained.
Thank you. Alright, now policy review.
Oh, yeah, so this, yeah, it's really quick, so when we met, was that last meeting we went over the policy manual, I sent it off to the lawyers at VLCT, they looked it over and give us a quote on what it will cost for the, for the legal review, which is sort of one of the hurdles we have to do in order to bring it back to you all to be voted upon. I went with them because their legal services are cheaper than our town lawyer, and they're very familiar with the model that we use, since it's their model, but they came back with a price of $665, it will not exceed seven hours at $95 an hour.
That's, that's our entire policy manual?
Yes, yes, everything that we saw at this table three weeks ago.
I move forward, I move that we move forward with having VLCT.
I'll second.
That was just that one policy for the?
That's the whole packet.
The whole packet, that was just that one policy, not all our policy.
No, it's the person.
Just want to make sure we make that clear, okay.
All policy we reviewed three weeks ago.
Alright, so, did you make a motion, I'm sorry?
Yes.
You second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any negative, no, okay. Alright, so then we can open up for public comment, please remember to raise your hand and state your name. Again, is there anybody?
Tim?
Oh my God.
Just a little spider.
Spider.
I'm sorry, first of all, I, I just want to thank you very much for the excellent presentation that the Nemex did today. First of all, I'd like to just add that if any letters do come in concerning complaints about the town, I really prefer that it not be brought to the meetings, these should completely be complaints that people are just kind of sending in, people shouldn't know their last names, but that's fine. Number two is, I just wanted to know if next meeting there could be an update on the base track meeting that I think was supposed to be held on October 4th, just to find out what the consensus is in there to maybe get that building torn down. Third item is that I think it's very nice, our, our dog officer, our animal officer is doing, I think, a very fantastic job, I think we're a little naive about the census where you're going to ask people to say yes or no, I think the bottom line comes, they're not going to say yes and not unregistered their dogs or their animals, the bottom lines, the census is going to be what we have that are registered and stuff like that, so, I, again, I just kind of say he's doing a great job. Number three is the Town Hall, I, I, I really appreciate what's going on with that whole thing, I'm just going to throw in here, I appreciate the Historical Society, and I'm going to throw in Gunno, Pauline Gunno, for the idea of coming up with everything that we have had there, and I don't want to keep her out of the whole picture. The last thing I'd like to just say is that I'm sure that a lot of the Nemec ideas that are coming forward are due to the forensic audit, that might have pointed out certain things that were not being done properly, procedural eyes, I don't think there was anything fraudulent, and I've heard that, I think, there were, there really no major problems, but at the same time, I just think a lot of what we're doing going forward may have been brought up with this audit, and I'm just wondering if eventually it will be accepted, presented to the townspeople, put it aside, and then we just all move forward, because I know Tim is doing an excellent job, Ellen's doing the best that she, I mean, it's hard being in the financial area with a municipal and other entities similar to it, that I think she's doing a good job, and I just feel that it's time to come to an end with this whole thing, but the only way that it's going to come to an end is to bring it out, put it on the table, and let's all move forward, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night. Megan, is there anybody else?
Wendy?
Wendy?
Good evening, my name is Wendy Lawrence, I just want to thank you all for the amazing work that you are doing, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the poultry thing that the animal control, and he's doing an amazing job, I'd like to also give him kudos. I just want to give a little more information in regards to that, it's not just the fear of the dog going after the poultry, I have looked it up, it can make my animals sick, I'm not allowed to have my animals on anyone else's property, I think that that should also be respected, I have elderly parents that come with walkers, that because my yard is filled with poop at this point, because they spend a lot more time at my place than at the owners, they then trail that through their house, and they're in their 90s and can't clean it, they trail it through my house, these animals poop on gas grills, my deck, I mean, it, it is definitely more than just a, I don't want my dog going after these, so I just wanted to give some more context in that, it really is affecting life when it, it's an animal that I don't have, and, and this, these are situations that I shouldn't have to deal with as a homeowner, thank you very much, I appreciate your guys' time and all that you do.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
That situation.
We have to go back and look at that.
Possibly send a health officer.
Right. Okay, is there anybody else raising their hand, Megan?
Anyone else raising their hand?
Move to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, none, thank you, everybody, please have a good night and be safe.